Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. We've got everyone here. I note that Mr. Alder is not with us tonight from our city board, but he might join us, and if not, I know he's tied up with city affairs if he's not here. Board members, you have before you a proposed agenda for tonight's meeting for the month of May. If you're okay with that, we would be open for a motion that we approve this agenda, otherwise changes you might have.
Come on.
Okay, have a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. Great, if you will all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. And board members, you had the minutes from our April board meeting emailed out to you. Any changes or corrections that need to be made to that, otherwise we would be ready to approve those.
Any question to approve?
Okay, got a motion?
Sure.
And a second. Any questions or corrections on that? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. Thank you. We also had in today's email the April disbursements for the month, so if you wanted to take a look at that. And a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. Thank you. All right, principals reports. Ms. Baker, Ralph Askins.
Okay, good evening. We have several events coming up over the next couple of weeks at Askins. The first one is this Thursday. Students in the Beta Club are going to participate in the Junior's House Walk, and we're proud of them. They were able to raise approximately $1,000 to donate to the Junior's House. And then this Friday, May the 10th, is our Tiger Tracks Day. Our parade will start at 9:00. And then after that, we'll have different zones of activity set up for the kids to enjoy for the remainder of the day. So we look forward to seeing everybody out for Tiger Tracks on Friday. And then our award ceremonies for the end of the year will be next week. On Tuesday, the 14th, we'll have kindergarten through 4th grade award ceremonies. And then on Wednesday, the 15th, we'll have a special ceremony for 5th grade as we send them off to the middle school. And also, pre-K has a program in their rooms that day as well for the parents. Summer School, our summer learning camp, will be held at Askins this summer. It will start on May the 28th and go to June the 21st. It is for upcoming kindergarten through 9th grade. Right now, we have our biggest turnout. We have a little over 200 students enrolled in the summer learning camp. And when they come, they'll get their breakfast, lunch, instruction in ELA, math, and intervention time. They also get to go to a stream class, and they get an hour of physical education as well during the summer. So we're looking forward to seeing all 200, I think it's 203 kiddos, starting on May the 28th. Those are our events coming up.
Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Mr. McLaurin from Fayetteville Middle.
All right, busy time for us as well. Finished 8th grade night last Saturday, huge success. Props to the teachers and the staff for getting everything ready. When it got time for the show, I actually got to be a parent, so it was all good. So they had everything taken care of, so huge thanks to them. Again, it takes a lot to get to that point in the decorating and everything, and again, very, very appreciative of them. May 8th is going to be our FMS Athletic Awards for students. We're going to do that at 10:00 in the morning. And then later that afternoon, we also have our yearbook dedication as well. So the kids will have some time that afternoon to sign yearbooks and annuals. May 9th, our Beta students are going to the Junior's House Walk as well, so they'll be down at the fairgrounds that day. May 10th, our Beta students will also be going to Dollywood for their kind of end-of-the-year trip. So because of the transition and when things happened when they did, we didn't get to do as much with them as far as traveling throughout the year, so we're going to take them to Dollywood, and we've got 49 kids that we're going to take and go enjoy that day. So we've got a charter bus. They're going, you know, they're going to love all that. May 13th is our Tiger Breakout Day. We're doing that at the schools. In the past, we've gone to Don Davidson, but for logistics reasons, it just makes it easier to do it out back. So looking forward to that. And then, May 14th will be our last academic awards, and that'll be at 10:00 a.m. as well in the gym. And so that pretty much takes us out through the end of the year.
Question?
Thank y'all.
Thanks, appreciate it. All right, Ms. Perrin from Fayetteville High School.
Thank y'all. As y'all probably know, our EOC testing and state no credit is now over. We do have some students, our AP students, are still working on their test. They pushed the window back a week. Normally, we would already be done, but they started this morning, actually. We had a student doing that. I want to thank Tennessee Livestock Association. We had our FFA banquet Saturday night, and they donated and cooked the meat for us, and that was a great night. Our spring sports are in tournament play right now. Softball, they're probably heading right now over to Huntland to play Iggle in the district tournament tonight at 6:00. Soccer will play Forest at Forest tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m. Tennis, they are probably finishing up for today. They're in the district right now, and we've got some updates. Several of our doubles qualified or made it to the next round of the district, so they will continue tomorrow with that. And then, a big congratulations to our baseball team. I'm very proud of them. They made school history, making the region for the first time. So we want to invite y'all. They play Friday night at Richland, and that will be at 5:00 p.m.
At 5:00?
Yeah, at 5:00. The first game is actually going to start at 2:00. I think that's Iggle's graduation, so they let them play early so they can get back for graduation. We're currently working on class registration for next year, so all of our returning students in the building have already had their chance to register with their classes. And then tomorrow, we're going to register the rising freshmen for their classes. And then, we're also going to be registering our rising 8th graders in CTE classes with the high school for next year. So that'll be something new, and that's something I know we're looking forward to, having those guys and girls come over a little bit earlier so we can get a true, you know, five-year, really be a five-year plan for them. So next week, next Monday, we have Senior Signing Day in the FMS gym. That'll be at 10:00 a.m., and you guys are invited to that. Tuesday night, next Tuesday night, Senior Awards Night. I know that's a big night. That will be 6:00 p.m. Next Wednesday morning, we're going to have our Senior Walk Through, so we will start over at Ralph Askins. We're going to try and be there 8:30-ish. Hopefully, I told all the seniors, her is my witness, I told them all to be there at 8:00 with their cap and gown, but hopefully, we'll have all them there. We'll start at Ralph Askins, and then, once we walk through there, we'll come through and walk through the middle school and then the high school. So I think that's a great tradition that we have. And then, that night, we'll have Bacolod that night at 6:00 p.m. in our gym there. And then Thursday, we'll have graduation, starting at 7:00 p.m.
So.
7:00?
Yes, sir. And that's all I have for y'all.
It's a blitz.
It is. It is the last two weeks.
As soon as the graduation's over, you turn those lights off, you can take a breath, and it gets way easier all of a sudden.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any questions? Good luck.
Thank you. Thank y'all. I do want to say, I appreciate, sincerely, I appreciate the support that y'all have shown me in my first year as principal of the high school. I appreciate the support that you've shown to our students, and I look forward to many more years together. So, thank you, guys.
You've done a great job.
Thank you.
Done a great job. Okay, we have a item on the agenda each month for public comment.
There have been no requests.
No requests to speak? All right, we'll move on to our supervisors' report, and it looks like it's me.
I wanted to give you, Spencer just filed about this year. This is next year. It's been approved by the state. All of our PD stuff, holidays and all that has been approved, so.
So I wanted to get that in your hands, because we actually started talking about that today in our staff meetings, and Mr. Jones, we're already looking forward to in-service and things at the end of July. So there's kind of an idea of what we're looking at for next year, and let's get that to you. Spencer mentioned testing, and we did get that finished as far as our TCAP testing goes. Ralph Askins did paper and pencil this year, and then the middle school and high school EOCs at high school were online, so they all took them on their Chromebooks this year, and it went really, really well. Technology was great, and I'd like to point out Zach, I know y'all have met Zach a couple of times. He's been doing a lot. We've been adding some cameras to the campuses. We put a new camera in Ralph Askins' office. Mr. Avi was very excited about that, so we've got another one we're going to put at the high school office, and then we've got one for the in-school suspension room over at the middle school. So that, and then keeping the service and everything going, he's done a fantastic job, and so I wanted to brag on Zach. And then, as far as testing goes, the three principals all did a wonderful job. I mean, they really did great with this. So we're in the middle of doing our teacher claiming right now. We'll finish that up, and they've got through Monday to finish that up, and then we'll submit that next week from the district level. So that's about all I have right now. So if you have any questions about anything, I'll try to answer them.
I think the November 1st staff development is genius. Well done.
We're trying to be looking forward at all times to take advantage of our situations, best of our abilities.
Very.
It's your sleepy trigger triggers that morning, wasn't it?
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you so much, so I appreciate all you do for us. Ms. Williams, I see you there.
So the April financial reports were emailed earlier, and I would just these are for your review and just entertaining the questions you may have.
The only thing I think I would love to just, is there any update on our revenue? Is no change? We were writing on some things that looked preliminary.
TISA or...
I think probably she's asking specifically about local share.
Yeah.
I think it's commensurate with what it has been.
We've been told it's like revenue neutral.
That's what it is.
So, no change.
No change.
And then our TISA revenues, that changes.
Daily, hourly.
Federal, sometimes, multiple times a day.
So and I just budgeted what we were expecting to receive this year for next year, just because it was, it changed so much.
And you all know how we try to operate, so we've basically built a budget based on last year's numbers so that we know we'll be able to meet what the standard that we set.
Well, thanks for providing those revenue and expenditure reports each month. They're very helpful to look at. We have some committee reports. Anything from facilities and transportation?
Yes, sir. I would like to bring the board up to speed on a couple of things. One, interestingly, is we are looking at doing some stuff to improve the look and the accessibility of the front of Ralph Askins. This is something that we've had kind of floated out to firm architects. The gentleman who was working on the project retired mid-draft, so they've got a new gentleman on it, and he's got about a weekend on it, but he is using the work with the other person did. Hopefully, next month, we'll be able to report on it. And as soon as they have mock-ups and kind of ideas, I'll share those out to be emailed or through my director's report, but we're encouraged that that'll become forthcoming in the very near term. The buses are still in there. We've had some repairs done. We've been fortunate to have someone who's able to work on them, and we've got a pretty good turnaround. We are still waiting on some big parts for Bus 09, which has been sitting next to the shed for like six weeks now, some like forever, it seems like, which is unfortunate, but there's some people who've had to outsource and bring in from, I think, Canada again. And once we get all that together, we'll be able to move it and have it back in service. With our FEMA-TEMA project, there were eight projects that were supposed to go up Friday or Thursday for approval. We were supposed to have a call with TEMA Thursday. They did not call us, and they did not respond to our calls. So I don't know if that means there was an emergency that they had to respond to, or if they just don't have any news to share with us and they don't want to tell us that again. It's, I mean, you know, it's one or the other. I don't know which it is. As soon, they will have to communicate with us sometime this week, I'm sure, and as soon as I know that, I'll send that out in the weekly report and keep you all updated.
Were we thinking our project was one of the eight?
We, there's no way to know, but now that they're getting to the batched projects, we are in a batched project, so the hope would be that we would be. And if any of them were passed, and because we have been already passed for one scenario, then I would think that we'd be in the best position to be approved again.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's encouraging. It doesn't take much. It doesn't take much. Just give me a little hope.
We moved it from $1,000.
Right. Okay, well, thank you for those updates. Any questions about facilities, transportation, anything? All right, several things in finance, a lot of, in fact, if you don't mind, Ms. Williams, do you mind kind of walking through? We have, the first one is the FY24 General Purpose Budget Amendment, number five, and that involves summer learning camp funds that the state provided. You'll see that, it was like 109, 861, and then there was also $19,000, 925 for transportation. There's also then funds, help me here.
So the second page is just moving some funds from one function to another.
Yeah.
And some of it is, we've got it broken down within maybe the SSG and the Ralph Askins, that's, I think that may be what you're, yeah, so that is just moving funds from one function to another.
Yeah. The real issue was we got revenue there for summer learning camp, right? In terms of?
Yes.
Of new revenue.
Yes.
So I make a motion that we approve Budget Amendment Number Five for the General Purpose Budget. Okay, got a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. Great. And then we have General Purpose Line Item Amendment Number Four.
And this is just moving monies within each category or each function to adjust the budget?
Yeah.
And that's for like three pages.
Again, this is more than not waiting till the end of the year to do a massive change.
Doing some cleanup.
Yeah, just cleaning it up through the year. Yeah. Okay, so I make a motion, we approve General Purpose Budget Line Item Amendment Number Four. Got a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. All right, and we also have FY24 Capital Line Item Amendment Number One. And as I recall, this is the bus that we purchased cost a little bit more than we had anticipated, so we're moving some money out of Capital LA to cover the difference in the bus. So I make a motion, we approve that amendment. Got a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. We also have FY24 Cafeteria Line Item Amendment Number One.
And this is just, so just moving money within the function to offset some of the expenses and get the budget more in line.
Yeah, kind of cleaning some things up within the line, so I make a motion, we approve this amendment. And I have a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. And finally, FY24 Cafeteria Budget Amendment Number Two.
Yes, and this is where we had to purchase some equipment and then add some more monies to offset some of our expenses, and we are pulling funds from their fund balance, and they have fund balance to help with these costs.
Good to hear. So I make a motion, we approve that amendment. Got a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. Thank you. Insurance and policy. Anything, Ms. Baker? Okay, quiet moment. Superintendent's report.
Pardon me, the Principal Search Committee is working really hard, and we are narrowing down the field of candidates. It looks like we are down to the very last decisions we made. I anticipate we will make small firsts, and if not this week, in the very near future. I want to report that we've been fortunate to have some standing candidates apply just very recently, and that's encouraging. Pleased to have those people interested in becoming Tigers. The other thing that I'd like to mention is this is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we are very blessed to have quite a number of educators who are dedicated, who care about our young people, and who work hard every day, and I just want to express my sincere gratitude and appreciation to every one of those teachers. And that is my report.
Okay, and their job unfortunately just seems to get harder with every pass in school year, doesn't it?
Yes, sir.
More requirements.
I think all public services like that, but teachers definitely face it as well.
Okay, a few things here that I wanted to run through. As you know, we like to nominate both a student for the TSBA Student of the Year each year, and Mr. Perrin is going to handle that for us from our high school. And then, we also like to nominate Volunteer of the Year because we've just got so many volunteers that help our system out throughout the school year, and at all the schools. Any school could nominate this. This year, we've had Tim and Sonya Ellis nominated, and I think if you think about all the things they've done, we think about them in terms of Tiger Touchdown Club, but they really give back much more to the system than just football. It is, it is a, they are just one of the pillars. It's a unique nomination because it's school volunteer, as in singular, but what we're really nominating is a couple, Mr. Menzies Lincoln County, actually, as it turns out, right? So we'll, I do, would like to ask for your approval of Tim and Sonya Ellis as our nominee for South Central District Volunteer of the Year.
No one.
Okay, have a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. I think they are most deserving, and if you have ideas for future Volunteers of the Year, just talk to Mr. Jones and make sure we don't leave anyone out who's deserving, because there are a lot of folks that really make a difference in the lives of our students. It is Teacher Appreciation Month, and so we have a resolution for your consideration tonight. We'd like to recognize the enormous contributions our teachers make on a daily basis and establish May 2nd as Teacher Appreciation Day. And we are also encouraging through this resolution that our schools and communities recognize our teachers that day and on throughout the rest of the school year, which is almost over with. But in any event, really want to honor them. As Mr. Jones said, they are truly the heart and soul of what we're doing here with our Tigers. So I would make a motion, we approve that resolution for Teacher Appreciation Day.
I can move shallows.
Okay, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. There's also another resolution I hope you noticed in your packets. TSBA has fought really hard. They fight hard every legislative session, but in particular, this legislative session was really, really, really a hard battle to protect public education. And I think it was very innovative program they started called I AM, Essentially What I Am Because of Public Education. And they started a statewide campaign for us to really stand up for public education and make sure our governor and our legislators understand the voices of Tennessee say, "Support public education." And I think they heard that this session, but we've also heard elected officials say, "We'll be back in January with more ideas." And of course, that keeps us always on edge. I thought it was appropriate for our board to consider a resolution in support of this I AM Because of Public Education campaign. I won't read it, because you do have a copy in your email, but it is resolving that we support this campaign and really want our lawmakers to understand, and the public in general, to understand that whatever we do with education in Tennessee, the masses, the real heart and soul of educating Tennesseans is going to fall at the feet of public educators, and we have to continue to keep that awareness and keep support to get the resources that our teachers and all of our system need. So I would make a motion that we approve that resolution in support of the I AM Because of Public Education campaign.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Thank y'all very much. We also, at 4:00 today, just before our board meeting, convened a work session as advertised and did our annual evaluation of our director's tools. Mr. Jones, appreciate everybody's diligence, both getting in some very comprehensive inputs from Mr. Jones on what the last 12 months has been like in terms of accomplishments and challenges and actions he's taken. And I appreciate all the board members' diligence in reviewing all that material in terms of the rubric we have to evaluate him. We have a scale, just for the public information, we have a scale of one to five, ranging from poor to outstanding. And of all the categories that we evaluate him across, averaged across all six board members, Mr. Jones' score was 4.99, and so we appreciate, what a first, what a great first year in this, in this job, and we anticipate many more. So, thank you. Well done.
I appreciate the board and the confidence in me. Look forward to continuing to do wonderful work for our students.
We do, too. To that end, a couple of things I would want the board to consider tonight. One is, I would make a motion for your consideration that we, that you authorize me to go off and modify his current contract to extend it for a year, just add a year on the back end of his contract so that it's, again, a four-year contract. I assume it's, yeah, it must be, it must be currently a four, and you've now got three years left. So I'd like to be able to add another year. We're limited by state law of, to four years that we can have a contract, so I would like to be authorized to go ahead and get that ready for you. So, um, I would like to, um, be authorized to go ahead and get that ready for your consideration at the June meeting. We can approve it at the June meeting, but, but I'd like to go ahead and, uh, get your support for that. So I'd make a motion that we, uh, begin the process of rewording and, uh, preparing the contract to extend his contract another year.
Second.
All right, kind of a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. Um, and then, as you will recall, we gave, uh, a bonus at Christmas time, uh, December break, uh, to all of our teachers and, um, and actually all our employees, period. Uh, and we structured it so that they would net after taxes and other things, that they would net $1,100. I confirmed this with Ms. Williams after our work session. And so I would make, Mr. Jones did not, by nature of the fact that he's not, uh, he's, his employment is under contract to us, not through the system as an employee in that sense, uh, did not receive that. And so I would, I would make a motion that we, uh, authorize a, a net $1,100 bonus for Mr. Jones.
Sure.
All right, super. I got a, a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Um, and I, and I understood from discussion that this, that you've not done May payroll yet, so you could actually work that out to be paid out in the, in the May pay, payroll. That's good, okay. Super. And, and of course, by contract, Mr. Jones will receive the, uh, pay increase that the teacher, I forget the exact wording, but essentially what the teacher, licensed teachers receive is what the superintendent will receive. That's not unique to Mr. Jones. That's what we've done ever since we've had a, um, well, since I've been on the board.
Contract.
Ever since we've had a superintendent contract, that's what we've done. And it's, and it's worked well for us and I think also for the superintendent. So that's, that's not something we take action on, because it's already in the contract. Um, so if you could look at calendars for just a moment, uh, June, our, our next board meeting would ordinarily be June 3rd. We've, we've got some conflicts, I know that already. And I was wondering if we could do it on the 10th. Is that possible for the board? We did it Monday, June 10th at 5:00 p.m. Is that okay? Okay, all right. So we'll, we'll plan to meet 5:00, June 10th, um, for our board meeting. And then I think just, just FYI, the Finance Committee is actually going to meet at 4:00 that day. And we're, we try to do that a week out, but because of the schedule conflicts, summer is hard. Um, and so we'll, we'll do that, the Finance Committee meeting at 4:00 that day. So, um, that's all I have on my agenda. I, I do have a, a small token of appreciation. It is the end of the school year and we always want to say, uh, best wishes to our student, uh, ex officio board member. Um, Ms. Maria has served well. We appreciate your input on the, on the times you've given us some input. Uh, we have a small token of our appreciation. And then to me, the coolest thing you get is you get to keep your name blank, which is really official that you served on the school board. That's, I'm sincere, I think that's really cool. So that's yours, uh, as you leave tonight. You are welcome to come and join us at the June and July meetings, uh, because we won't have a new student member until, um, until August. Uh, so technically you are welcome back, but I understand if your schedule prohibits, uh, prevents you from being here, we certainly understand. But we didn't want to miss, uh, before the school year ended, uh, presenting you with a small token of our appreciation. So I would like to, uh, up and around. We really appreciate your willingness to serve and I hope it was a high opening as a, to see what public service is about. That's awesome. Awesome, awesome. And don't forget to take your, that's great. Any, any words for the board you'd like to?
Um, I would say thank you for the opportunity and choosing me to be a part of the board. And I would like to say thank you to everyone who did donate to our fan brunch. And thank you cards will be coming out as the event happens and to sexfully is around. So thank you, guys.
I think it's awesome having a student join us and, uh, and really be a part of this dynamic. So thank you, you've been a great one and we will miss you.
Absolutely.
But we'll be looking at headline news about all your accomplishments in the future. So that's going to be fun to follow you. That's great. Uh, that's all I have. Y'all board members, y'all have anything else as we close out the May board meeting? If not, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.